All righty, let's call it meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Engler.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Protam Adam.
Here.
And Mayor McNamie.
Here.
Madam Clerk, it's my understanding we have no public comments, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. So I'd like to call up to the microphone Amy Cummings of the Commons, Vice President, Community and Employer in Government Relations at Los Robles Hospital. You've got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor McNamie. Appreciate it. Members of the council, thank you so much for having us. I want to applaud your leadership and obviously the partnership that we've shared in the community for over 55 years now. I'm thrilled to bring to you today members of our trauma team as well as our emergency department. We're going to be educating you and the general community, thanks to your goodwill tonight, on the benefits of Narcan. Bill's going to talk a little bit about fentanyl and what we are seeing locally on a localized level. Then we'll be going on to educate CPR, hands-only CPR. American Heart Association a few years ago got rid of the icky mouth-to-mouth, so it's compression only. And we're going to have an opportunity for each of the council member to do hands-only CPR today. And then we'll show you how to use your AED. There are AEDs all over the community. You'll notice them in your churches, in grocery stores, in department stores and what have you. Your peripheral vision will start to see an AED. Most important thing to do is to call 911. We'll talk about that today. And they're going to ask you, is there an AED? Go get an AED. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And then unfortunately, we are going to continue to educate because we are seeing an increase on mass shootings. So we're going to talk a little bit about Stop the Bleed. So tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Bill Ashland. He's the Director of our Trauma Department. With him is Lori Acevedo. And Lori is our trauma coordinator. And to her immediate right is Claire Gillette. Claire is also a trauma coordinator at Los Robles Hospital. And then the lovely Megan Shaner. She is the manager of our emergency department. And her colleague Marcelo Rivera is here. We also have two members of our student team in the emergency department. And I have three of our phenomenal Ventura County Medical Explorer post 911 students that are going to be here to help tutor and educate you in CPR. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bill Ashland, Director of Trauma, Los Robles Hospital. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you for having us here. As your regional referral medical center, we specialize in trauma, cardiac, stroke, sepsis, and full-standing ER. What we're talking about are four interventions that the public can do that will save lives and improve outcomes. We have a wonderful EMS system in this community. Most of our patients are to that hospital when 911 calls. It is well within the 30-minute timeframe. That includes extrication out of motor vehicles and so forth. So we have a strong EMS, but brain and tissue and heart is all saved by minutes of inflammation. So these interventions that we're going to talk about are directly related to those interventions. As Amy pointed out here, Narcan is a huge problem across the country. I think in '22, there was over 100,000 deaths nationwide. We had nearly 221, I believe, in Ventura County. You guys know the stats, probably better than everybody. But what was published, so fentanyl is leading that opioid epidemic that's occurring, but that also includes patients that are on chronic pain meds. It also includes patients on methadone. And what Narcan does is Narcan reverses the effects of that narcotic. So the biggest effect of that narcotic is apnea, which is people that stop breathing. So you can see here on the slide that, you know, patients, and this is a classic picture, the patients are totally limp, arms are at their side, they're unable to hold their head up. They stop breathing, or they're slow breathing down, slow, so slow, that their metabolic rate and their oxygen consumption and oxygen delivery starts to slow. These people are cold to the touch because they're in shock. Their lips are oftentimes blue and their nail beds are blue. And their pupils are pinpoint, and that's really the highlight of opioid overdose, is that pinpoint pupil. So what Narcan is available, it's now available over the counter. Surprisingly, they've got the cost down to about $45 a dose. The community can just, like I said, it's over-the-counter medication, doesn't require a prescription. You can purchase this and keep this with you. One dose of Narcan is about four milligrams. It squirted intranasally. Lori's got an example of one over there. She's just going to, you just hold that up to one nostril and you inject it directly in the nostril, pointing it laterally up against the surface area of the nose, and it's almost, it is very instantaneously. It reverses that narcotic, and these people wake up very quickly from their, they still have to go to the hospital. This narcotic is distributed in fat tissue, so again, they can become resedated after that Narcan wears off. That Narcan is very short-acting. But you can get two doses of that if you're in a remote area. And again, these patients and these people are very obviously incapacitated, and Narcan makes a difference while that 911 system is being activated. So any questions? Please ask if they're coming up.
Questions, council? We're good. Please proceed.
Thank you. Hands-only CPR. So we're going to demonstrate that for you. As Amy said, it's really improved outcomes. We know that oxygenated blood is still in the body even though the heart may be stopped. And by circulating that oxygenated or partially oxygenated blood through the heart muscle, we're going to keep that heart muscle alive and get that heart muscle ready for shock. Go ahead.
Thanks, Bill. So Bill kind of talked about why it's so important to do hands-on CPR, sidewalk CPR, bystanders, why is it so important? In the hospital, we have lots of great stuff that'll help support the heart, but time is what will affect the patient's outcome and basically how functional and awake and alive they get to be after we fix their heart at the hospital. So it's really, really important that we teach the community in general sidewalk CPR because that will make the biggest difference in their outcome after the hospital. It's also preparing the heart for the shock with the AED, which we'll get to later. And when do we do CPR? We do it if someone does not have a pulse, which means their heart stopped, it's not beating, or if they're not breathing. If they stop breathing, it'll only be a short amount of time before their heart stops as well. So like if someone's overdosed, they're not breathing, but there's no Narcan, you can start CPR because their heart will stop shortly after. All right, we'll go through a demonstration and then we'll have you guys come over here and try it yourself. So you're going to come up to your patient on the side of the patient with your knees scooted up close against their torso. Place the palm of your hand right on their sternum. It's the hard bone in your chest. It's central at the nipple line. So you'll place the palm of your hand there with your other hand on top of it. Your elbows are locked, not like on the movies. Your elbows are locked, and you bring your shoulders above your wrists, so you're leaning over the patient. And then you're going to start pumping on their chest about 100 beats a minute, which will basically be hard and fast if this is an emergency. On the mannequins, you'll be able to hear a click. That's about two inches deep in the patient's chest. And it's important to come all the way up off their chest, so you allow the heart to refill with blood before you push it down again. I love you guys are all in sync. Some concerns people have brought up before is Good Samaritan laws. They're a little bit hesitant about that. In a sentence, you're protected. You can, doing something is better than nothing. There's also a concern about breaking ribs. That's okay, they're already dead. And it's actually cartilage. Those will heal. They'll be fine with the rib fractures. And like Amy mentioned earlier, we're no longer doing respirations. When you stop pumping to do respirations, it's affecting the brain tissue and your brain function too much. And when your heart stops, all the blood in your body is still full of oxygen. So you can just pump it and you'll still be getting enough oxygen to your brain that you'll have a good outcome. So it's more effective, better outcomes to just do compressions outside the hospital. Perfect. All right, let's have you guys come learn how to do hands-on CPR.
See if our council members can maintain a rhythm. This is good.
And before we start CPR, you're going to, don't forget to tell someone to call 911 and ask for an AED. And you're going to get them onto a hard surface. So if somebody's sitting in a chair or they're on a bed, something soft, when you push, they're just going to sink with you. So you want to get them down onto a hard surface. All right, go ahead and kneel next to your patient with your knees scooched up against their torso. Bring the palm of your hand into the center of their chest with your other hand on top. Lock your elbows. Lean forward, perfect. And then go ahead, start pumping to about 100 beats a minute, or you can sing out louder in your head, "Stayin' Alive." Typically, we do it for about two minutes and then you switch out if someone is available to help you. And you keep going until 911 arrives and we'll show you. Excellent. We should have timed you for two minutes. It gets very tiring very quickly. And once you've started CPR, you're not going to stop. You can switch out with someone else, communicate with them if you're getting tired to switch out, but don't stop until 911 shows up. Hopefully, someone is available to bring you an AED that's on site. Otherwise, the paramedics will bring an AED to you, to the patient. Perfect. All right. You guys are perfect. I feel like that's about two minutes. And then we'll show you what to do when someone brings you an AED. It was when someone brings an AED and starts to set it up, which we'll show you, don't stop. They'll be setting it up while you're doing CPR. You just don't want to stop getting that brain to the patient, the blood to the patient's brain. All right, thank you, guys. You're welcome to take a seat again. Thank you. Great job.
So like Amy had mentioned, AEDs are available out in our community. Any public area is tending to have them. And so once you do start CPR, you want to ask somebody to go run and grab the AED if it's available. So as you're doing CPR, the person that grabbed the AED will be setting it up. And so we're going to walk you through what it looks like or what it sounds like. So the first thing you want to do is you want to turn on the AED. And it's going to walk you through the whole process.
Call for help now.
So it's going to remind you to call 911.
Remove all clothing from patient's chest.
So again, you're going to expose the chest, make sure there's nothing on top of the patient that, so when you're going to put the pads on, it's going to be directly onto the skin.
Full red handle to open bag.
So as Lori's showing you, there's the bag, and you're going to rip it open.
Look at pictures on pads. Peel one pad off blue plastic. Apply pad to bare skin exactly as shown in the picture. Press pad firmly. Peel other pad off blue plastic. Apply pad to bare skin exactly as shown in the picture. Press pad firmly. Do not touch patient. Evaluating heart rhythm.
So at this point, you're going to be stopping CPR.
Stand by.
So it's going to direct you to shock.
Everyone clear. Press flashing button. Shock delivered. Provide chest compressions and rescue breaths.
So this AED is a little bit outdated. So we no longer provide the rescue breaths, but we are still continuing CPR. And so you're going to be continuing CPR throughout this whole time. And as the AED will be timing you, it'll direct you again to pause.
Continue care.
It'll direct you to pause, and then it'll, again, it'll examine the heart, determine if the heart needs a shock or not. And then if a shock is needed, it will deliver that shock and then it'll advise you to continue CPR. If there's no shock needed, then the machine will detect that there's no shock needed and it'll direct you just to continue CPR. So.
Question, will the machine direct us that we do have a heart rhythm and no need to do any more CPR?
Yes. If you're successful in your CPR and the shock hopefully reset the heart, it will direct you to stop and then you will just maintain there until on-scene until the EMS arrives.
Thank you.
Oh, so you can use that multiple times?
So no, the machine will have to be switched out with the pads, will have to be switched out because the pads are one-time use.
I see. Okay, so just once.
Just once, yeah.
Any other questions, by council? Thank you, proceed.
Yeah.
So our goal for community standards is to have a Stop the Bleed box right next to your AEDs, like is in the picture. And then just like we were talking about Narcan, also tourniquets are saving lives. These have come back into practice, mostly from the Gulf Wars. We realized that bleeding, all death starts with bleeding, and all trauma death, preventable trauma death is bleeding-related. So we know that if we can stop bleeding from wounds, that we can save lives and improve So the American College of Surgeons has started a Stop the Bleed program, and this is across the nation. Law enforcement carries tourniquets now, EMS carries tourniquets. And our goal is to have about 10% of the population trained in how to apply a tourniquet and Stop the Bleed program. So our students are going to demonstrate. First thing is always, when we're dealing with any of these emergencies, is call 911. Find the bleed. So this is, this seems like it's silly, but bleeding follows gravity. So if you're standing or you're laying down, you could be bleeding from another site and just gravity following. There's a pool of blood that's on the table there. You guys want to hold that up. That's about 500 cc's of blood loss, which is like, we call that first-degree shock. That's like if you go donate some blood and you get a little lightheaded afterwards, you do really well with that much blood loss. But when you double or triple that blood loss, you get into class-three shock or extensive shock where your organs are going to become affected. And we want to get, we want to stop the bleeding before we get two or three of those 500 cc blood losses. We have about 4.5 liters in our body, and if you lose about 25% of that to 40% of that, you're going to be a non-survivor. So our goal is to intervene quickly. Most bleeding starts, stops with direct pressure. So just like in CPR, these guys are going to go ahead and find the wound, expose the wound, cut the clothing away. Once they find the wound, they're going to put direct pressure on that with gauze or a T-shirt or anything. Hopefully, you have gloves available for you and those Stop the Bleed kits, they have gloves available. If you're using direct pressure and it's not holding, it's not stopping, we also advocate wound packing. So what she's doing is she's packing gauze down into the wound. Arteries tend to run along deep fissures, along bones and things like that. So she's pushing that gauze down against, directly against the blood vessel and deep into the wound and creating a, we call it a tamponade, which is a pressure against the blood vessels itself, and that'll help slow and stop bleeding totally. So first step, compression. Next step is packing. And you can see the arms are straight and they're usually in direct pressure of their body weight to hold that bleeding. The third avenue is a tourniquet. And we place tourniquets when we have pulsatile blood flow. So when blood flow is squirting as in arterial injury, we're going to put a tourniquet on it. You can deploy a tourniquet on yourself in like about 25 seconds. So tourniquets are Velcro-driven and they have a windlass. Windlass is the crank that's used. If you've taken Boy Scouts or first aid years ago, a windlass was a stick that they used to turn a belt and create a tourniquet this way. This is a much safer method of occluding blood. It's much quicker. Like I said, law enforcement can deploy this in just seconds on themselves or on their buddy. It's designed to be put on with one hand as soon as the Velcro's closed and you start to turn the windlass. It's important that you completely occlude the artery, so you have to really turn that windlass, so it's going to be very, very uncomfortable. But it's safe. You can put that wind, you can put that tourniquet on a patient for over two hours and have no nerve damage or arterial damage or extremity damage distal to that tourniquet. We like to put tourniquets on long bones, and we like to put tourniquets just two or three inches above the wound. Tourniquets work better when they're over a single bone, is in the bicep area or the forearm if need be. And if there's continued bleeding, sometimes we'll add a second tourniquet. But we leave these tourniquets on when EMS arrives, and then these tourniquets go off when they get to the trauma center and the surgeon removes the tourniquet. But like I said, it's very safe for over, up to two hours. I've seen tourniquets on for six hours in remote country that do very well. Our whole goal is to stop bleeding. And the number-one cause of preventable death in trauma is bleeding. Trauma is a surgical disease, so we want to get, stop the bleeding so we can get these people to, get them to the trauma center so they can be revived correctly and get to the OR where they can surgically repair that artery or ligate it. Any questions on tourniquets?
Absent a wonderful tourniquet that you can have in kits. If you don't have a tourniquet like the one demonstrated here, what are some of the improvising methods we could use on this?
You know, we talk about that a lot when you talk about T-shirts and belts and things like that where you have, but you have to have a mechanical device that can twist it and turn it down appropriately. These are so much safer and easier to apply than those other devices. If you don't get the tourniquet down tight enough where it actually occludes the artery, you can actually make the bleeding worse. So the blood flow flows into the wound, but then it doesn't come back out. It leaks venously. So you can actually increase bleeding if that tourniquet's not applied correctly.
Let me come back to the question a different way. You're out hiking up in the Santa Monica Mountains, 30, 40 minutes away. You don't have a tourniquet kit like this. What are my options?
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to use what you have. A T-shirt, something sturdy enough, you're going to roll it into a spiral and use a windlass, get a stick where you can actually turn it and secure it, and then leave it on. We don't advocate loosening tourniquets anymore, and we leave them in place and get to help.
Any success in brachial or femoral compression?
Yep, correct. And, you know, the tourniquet is small. I carry them on my mountain bike, on my motorcycle, pretty much everywhere I go for that reason.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? Mr. Adam.
Sorry. I just wanted to ask a question about the CPR, if I may. You know, if you're in an unfortunate enough situation where someone collapses in front of you to the ground, and you're the one there that's got to do something. So there's this prostate, prostate person. What's the first thing you should do?
You want to shake them. You want to activate 911 system, okay? No matter what the issue is, they're not responsive. So you're going to shake, rattle them, roll, you're awake, you're awake. If you don't get a response, you're going to check for a pulse. If you don't get a pulse and you see not breathing, you're going to start CPR immediately.
Where's the best place to check for a pulse?
Good, great question. So we advocate large blood vessels, either on the neck or the arm, is good, or the groin is a good method.
Okay.
But typically, on the neck is probably the most reliable.
So call 911, check for a pulse, and then breathing.
Yeah.
So do you have to get your face down to the?
No, we're advocating go straight to CPR, state compression. So since we've been doing CPR for however many years we've been doing it, since we've been doing hands-only CPR, we've, we've almost tripled our survival rate. So it used to be single digits, now it's in the 20 and 30 range, depending on how much of your community is trained in hands-free CPR.
What's the best way to see if they're breathing or not?
So as you do compressions, you're actually moving air in and out of the lungs by laminar flow. So it's a slow flow, but there's adequate oxygen. You have the ability to extract almost all your oxygen from your blood, your red cells as they carry oxygen. So you're able to extract that oxygen just with CPR alone. We're created that way.
Okay.
If you're worried about, you know, you approach the person and you're like, well, are they breathing? Are they not breathing? One good way to note that is the rise and fall of the chest, right? If their chest is rising and falling, they're breathing still. Then you can check for your pulse. If they're pulseless, then you know you need to get started on CPR. If there's no respirations, you need to get started on CPR. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. It's like you have to do a very quick assessment because time is of the essence. So call 911, check for a pulse, check for breathing. If you get no pulse, you get no breathing, you've got to get started right away. Okay, all right, that's good.
Councilmember Engler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back on the tourniquet, I'm thinking that our goal is to stop the bleeding. So if pressure works, great, the bleeding stops. If you have to use a tourniquet, bleeding stops, that's the goal. Is there a danger of going too tight? Is there, is that something people should worry about?
We go tight till the bleeding stops. That's our goal. So you're going to, you're watching the bleed, and somebody's putting direct pressure while you're putting the tourniquet on, you're just going to keep cranking until the bleeding stops. Yep. And you're correct, you're not going to be able to turn it tight enough to cause any kind of damage like that.
Great. That should be reassuring to folks to be able to take that action.
All of these interventions are Good Samaritan-approved. These are, these are safe. These are expected practices within your community.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on the Good Samaritan practice and what that actually means in reality?
It means that you're offering services in good faith to save a life.
So if something doesn't go quite right, is the person held liable?
No.
And I'd like to thank our resident paramedic expert, fireman, Mr. Engler. Thank you. We have another question from Councilmember Adam.
If I may, yeah, I just want to get the succession of events here. I was unfortunate enough in my office complex that someone did go down like this. Anyway, so assess the situation, call 911, check for pulse, check for breathing, start the CPR. And then if there is an AED available, when does that come in? Just immediately or?
So hopefully, like if you're in an office situation, one person stays with the patient, you do not leave the patient. And you tell someone else to go bring you the AED. You tell someone else to go call 911.
Right.
If you happen to be by yourself, then you're going to call 911. You can put them on speaker. If you're home, you can tell Alexa or Siri to call 911, and they will. And then the 911 operator will instruct you. But hopefully, you're in a place where there's multiple people, like in an office, and someone else will go get the AED and bring it to you.
But you, that's part of the treatment, you would want to use the AED, correct?
If you have it available, you want to use it.
Okay, all right. As quickly as possible?
Yeah. Yeah, because what it's doing is kind of like shocking the heart and resetting it, so the sooner the better.
And once you've used that, should you continue with the CPR?
The AED will instruct you, yeah.
Okay. Oh, because that picks up whether there's a heart.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Exactly.
All right, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Great questions.
Well, I just want to be practical about it.
Yeah, because a lot happens really fast.
It could happen to anybody, in any situation. And, you know, people need to know what to do and not panic and have a course of action.
And not panic. The AED, so I actually was at a hot yoga studio after work, two years ago, two days ago. And this woman went into cardiac arrest, but I happened to be there, so I did CPR on her in the heat for a long time. Someone brought me an AED. I switched out, put the pads on her, shocked her twice. Our local AMR came, brought her to Los Robles. Now we're best friends. But the AED at the new studio we go to, as soon as you turn it on, it says, "Stay calm, call 911." But it tells you first, "Stay calm, it's okay." But a lot happens really, really fast.
Yes.
Even like, this is what I do for work, and out in the public, it's very different.
Yeah. Time is of the essence, and that woman was lucky that you were there.
Mm-hmm. It is of the essence with your heart, with your brain. And one last thing we wanted to talk about was stroke symptoms. So the acronym used to be FAST, and we just added on to that, B-Fast. So B is for balance. A lot of people will kind of be wobbly and have a hard time walking, or their sense of space and when they're taking steps will just seem off. Their eyes, they might only look to one side or not be able to look the other way, or they might complain of vision changes. The classic facial droop on one side. Arms, you can ask them to hold their arms out like this or like this. It might be completely paralyzed, or it might just kind of be a little weaker. Their speech, sometimes it comes out slurred, or if it's clear, they're just saying the wrong word. Or you can say, "What is this?" Or you can say, "What is this?" And they can't tell you that this is a pen. And then time. Obviously cardiac stuff, time is of the essence, but neurological stuff with strokes, you only have like a three-hour window where we can give you the medication that will bust the clot that's in your brain. At Los Robles, we can also go to interventional radiology and pull the clot out if it's in the right spot. But it's not something that you ever want to wait with. And someone might just have one of those symptoms, and they might get worse. So BFAST is kind of easy to remember, and we have little like handouts that you can just stick on your fridge or around the office or whatever. But, yeah. Do you have any questions?
Any other questions, council? It's back to you.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you all members of our team at Los Robles. As you can tell, we're not just a typical community hospital. We continue to invest in you, in your care, and in your good health. So much like today, we love to take our show on the road. This is a community service that we offer. We love to bring, you know, everything that you've seen tonight to groups large and small, to churches, to schools, to synagogues, to homeowners' associations, you know, to children. We're teaching, you know, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. We want everyone to know hands-only CPR, as well as be educated on how to identify a stroke. It's so important. So thank you for having us tonight. We applaud your leadership.
Question for you.
Pleasure.
So if a group wants to bring you in, what are the steps they go through to reach out and say, "I want Los Robles to come in and train up the people that we're involved in"? How do they do that?
Call Amy.
Call Amy. Let's start with basics. Call Los Robles Hospital, say, "I want Amy."
Contact Amy Cummins.